Good evening. Welcome to the September 21 City Council Meeting, being called to order at 6:04 PM. I am serving as the Mayor Pro Tem since due to the rotation of Mayor Pro Tems, I am serving in that capacity this month. Our Mayor, Mayor Paula Devine, was not with us last week and is not with us this week, and understandably so, because of the untimely passing of her husband and former City Civil Service Commissioner and Commissioner and Board Member Art Devine. Again, our thoughts and prayers continue to be with Mayor Paula Devine, and in the meantime, I will try my best to fill in for her. Let me announce that to slow the spread and transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the Community City Council, as well as all of our Board and Commission Meetings will continue to be close to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes, practice social distancing. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high-definition on the city's webpage at glendale.ca.gov/live, on youtube.com/myglendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices using a free app called Screenweave and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100. Public comments on a specific agenda item will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. Again, that number to call if you do have comments and wish to share with us your thoughts is 818-937-8100. And with that, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
President!
Brotman?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Devine? Mayor Pro Tem Kasakian?
Here. And let us all rise and place our right hands over our hearts to recite the flag salute. Ready?
Again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation.
Father, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish. We have an idea and a vision, as well as talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, or even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Your righteousness transcends all our efforts and understanding. Strengthen our confidence in who you have made us to be. Set us free from comparison in order to work together efficiently. Bless this meeting today, all those present and watching, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterwards. Ready us to make every moment count. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. May we please have your report?
The agenda for the September 21, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on September 14, 2021 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And now, under Presentation and Appointments, at 3:00 A. is the Agenda Previews. I will turn to Mr. Takhtalian.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Kasakian, members of the City Council. Next week, we'll have one special meeting in the afternoon, and that will be regarding a report seeking directions to negotiate with a single proposer for the lease and management of the Alex Theater, located at 216 North Brand Boulevard. In the evening for the City Council Meeting, we'll have a number of consent items. At 4:00 A. will be a report from Glendale Water and Power regarding GWP's power source disclosure for calendar year 2020. That'll be followed by a report from the Fire Department regarding acceptance of funding for the firefighter grant award. At 4:00 C. will be a report from the Police Department regarding the 2021-2022 grant funds for distracted driving vehicle code, bicycle, pedestrian, and driving under the influence violations. At 4:00 D. will be a report from the City Attorney regarding the establishment of the Landlord-Tenant Ad-Hoc Committee. 4:00 E. will be a report, again, from the Fire Department regarding the Pulse Point contract renewal. And the final consent item will be from Public Works regarding a contract award for tenant improvements at the Glendale Police Department's crime lab. Under Action Items, we'll have two reports from the City Treasurer. The first will be the City Treasurer's annual review of the city's portfolio, followed by another report regarding the City of Glendale's investment policy. And the final action item that night will again be from Public Works regarding consulting services to provide public outreach for regulatory compliance. The night will conclude with one hearing item. A City Attorney will provide an ordinance approving a statutory development agreement between the City of Glendale and Vista Investments LLC for the construction and operation of a six-story, 130-guest-room hotel located at 120 West Colorado Street. That concludes next week's preview.
All right. Thank you. What is next?
Next would be consent items, including items that following our routine and may be acted upon. By one motion, any member of the Council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. Mayor Pro Tem, I do have a caller for Item 4A and 4C. It's the same individual.
Okay, let's pull 4A and 4C off the calendar, and if there's anyone who wishes to remove the only remaining item on the consent calendar, which doesn't necessarily mean you have much of a consent calendar, but let's have a motion for 4B.
Thank you. I would move, I will move Item 4B, please.
Yeah, I'll second that.
A second was by Councilmember Brotman. Thank you. May we have a roll call on that one item?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine? And Mayor Pro Tem Kasakian?
Yes. So let's have, shall we have a staff report? I think it's probably better to hear the calls first and see what the comments and questions may be, and then it'll be more appropriate to have staff respond to that and any questions that they may have from the dais here.
Would you like me to read Item 4E?
Please do, and then let's go to the callers.
Glendale Water and Power regarding Amendment Number 2 to Professional Service Agreement with Clean Power Consulting Partners. One motion authorizing the City Manager or his designee to execute Amendment Number 2 to the Professional Service Agreement Contract Number 8000941 with Clean Power Consulting Partners. Said amendment increases the contract amount by $150,000 to a new not-to-exceed amount of $300,000 for additional consulting and project management services in connection with proposed Grayson repowering project. Jennifer Pinkerton, you have three minutes. You're for Item 4A. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmembers and staff. Thank you for allowing me to present comments today. I just would hope that it would be made emphatically clear on the Grayson item, Number 4A, that proceeding with the demolition does not in any way obligate the city to proceed with any of the alternatives that are proposed for Grayson, which include the new combustion turbines. I know that is stated clearly in the staff report, but it's not spelled out here in this item, so...
Mr. Mayor, she's speaking on Item 8A.
Ms. Pinkerton, I believe you may be addressing Item 8A.
No, I'm on 4A. Am I not?
No.
Well... Oh, the $300,000 is for something. Okay, my apologies.
No, it's totally fine. Do you have any comments on 4A, or may we?
No, my apologies.
All right. Don't go anywhere, because I believe you also requested to speak on 4B, correct?
4C.
Yes, 4C.
Sure.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Mr. Brotman.
Could I say something on 4A?
Absolutely.
Because I was, I was debating on this, but since it's been pulled, I guess accidentally, I'll say something. So I know we're, the proposal here is to increase the contract amount for this firm. Let me look to see what the, oh, Clean Power Consulting, right? And I just, I just want to say, and I already spoke to General Manager of GWP about this, but I have been disappointed with the individual that we're contracting with here. I think he's not given accurate information to, well, most reasonably, let's say, he did not give accurate information to the joint meeting of the Sustainability Commission and the GWP Commission with respect to the impact of additional transmission on the Grayson project proposal. He, he claimed that the 72 megawatts that we're getting from our participation in IPP was part of what led us get to the current project, but I don't think that's right, because that was never contemplated in the 2019 IRP. He also claimed that the 25 megawatts that we're getting through the ELAN project just displaces 25 megawatts of thermal. He said it's not additional transmission. I know these are technical things, but the question from the Chair of the Sustainability Commission was trying to get at an important point, and his answers really confused the issue and made it sound like the point of the Chair was not relevant. And, and I think that if this is not the subject that he's working on, he should be careful not to answer questions he doesn't know the answer to. And, and I would also ask Mr. Young, if he does do that, that you step in and make sure that you correct the record if he, if he misspeaks. That's all. I mean, I, I don't want to make too big of a deal of this. I just felt it's important to say, I, I've not, you know, I've seen this happen, and it bothers me.
And Mr. Brotman, have you, you've covered this issue with staff?
I have.
Are you aware of it?
I have.
And is staff aware of these concerns?
Yes, sir. I will review, I'll review the, the transcript and the video in question, and I'll make, I'll, I'll make sure that during the sustainability meeting that we get, we clarify the answer to make it more accurate, and I will note Commissioner Brotman's, or Councilmember Brotman's comment.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to comment on it further? Yes, Councilmember Agajanian.
I would like to move the item 4A.
Thank you. Is there a second for it?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Najarian. May we have a roll call on 4A?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine? Mayor Pro Tem Kasakian?
Yes, thank you. Can you please read 4C into the record?
Community Services and Parks Regarding Life Cycle Analysis and Triple Bottom Line Analysis of Artificial Turf and Natural Turf Resolution of Appropriation to appropriate $45,000 from the general fund, undesignated fund balance to Park Services Administration account.
Let's go to the telephone lines. I believe Ms. Pinkerton wished to speak on this.
Jennifer Pinkerton, this item is 4C. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Great, thank you again. I just would like to comment that I understand the value of doing life cycle analysis for some purchases, but in this case, we're talking about artificial turf, which is a plastic product. Plastics are fossil fuels, and making large investments in plastic products, particularly those that are non-recyclable, really sends the wrong message regarding the city's stance on climate change. Plastic turf, artificial turf sheds microplastics that exacerbates heat-on-expect. Microplastics are carried into our waterways. I would really like to see the $45,000 going to maintenance crews investigating possible vocational programs for high school graduates, looking to, looking for career opportunities possibly in the maintenance field, rather than for the life cycle analysis. I, I understand the point that the community services is trying to make, which is that the cost of natural grass maintenance outweighs the upfront cost of artificial turf, but it's not just dollars and cents. There are significant environmental concerns. The Parks Commission flatly rejected the proposal for artificial turf. And I'd also like to comment that I think we need to rethink our procedures, because this did not, the question of a life cycle analysis and funding did not come before the Sustainability Commission, and the majority of the Sustainability Commission members did make comments opposed to artificial turf when the issue was raised, but we were not, we were not allowed to vote on this issue. I just, I don't see this as a good investment of city money, because ultimately, we have to move away from plastics. We've suggested more long-term solutions, which is turning city parking lots or other city-owned property into parks, prioritizing use of athletic fields by Glendale residents. You should also investigate charging fees for non-residents sufficient to cover all your maintenance costs. Thank you again for allowing me to make these comments.
Mr. Belaninian, would you or anyone care to respond to some of these in terms of when this, is this report going to go to the Commission, or what is the status of once this report is complete?
Mayor Pro Tem Kasakian, members of City Council, yes, this life cycle analysis, once completed, will be presented to the Sustainability Commission per their request, and will be asked, the Commission will be asked to review it, obviously, and provide recommendations to City Council.
Was it made, was the request for this made by them specifically, or was it the Parks Commission that made this request?
It was the Sustainability Commission, not the Parks Commission.
Okay. All right, so I think Ms. Pinkerton will get an opportunity to review this, from my understanding. My concern, unless my colleagues have comments?
I will, but why don't you go?
Councilmember Brotman, go ahead. You have the floor.
You want me to go first?
Yes.
Um, yeah, and again, we spoke in the briefing yesterday, so I'm not saying anything out of, out of turn here. But, so, this question of artificial turf versus natural grass soccer fields went to the Parks Commission, and the Parks Commission voted, I think it was a 3 to 2 vote, so I can't say it was a unanimous vote, but it was a 3 to 2 vote to recommend against investing in artificial turf and to do everything possible to develop natural grass solutions for, for our soccer fields. It then, I believe, went to the Sustainability Commission. I think the Sustainability Commission was even more strongly opposed to artificial turf. So, and, and there was some third-party life cycle analysis presented, I think, to both the Parks Commission and the Sustainability Commission. I could be wrong on whether it's both or one, but there was some third-party life cycle analysis, I think, from Scandinavia or something.
Mr. Belaninian, can you speak more directly into the microphone? I don't know if it's on.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Kasakian, Councilmember Brotman, the, basically, staff went to the Parks Commission with their own analysis on artificial turf versus natural turf, and the Parks Commission did vote 3 to 2 to have, to stop all the, all artificial turf projects and wait a few years to see if there are any other new product out there that will be more sustainable for our projects. The report that we took to Commission was not taken to Sustainability Commission or the Sustainability Commission. When I made a departmental presentation to the Sustainability Commission, I mentioned that we are working on securing a consultant vendor to provide an LCA, Life Cycle Assessment Report, and we will be going to both Parks Commission and the Sustainability Commission after the report is finalized, as well as Council.
Right, and, and so I understand, okay, so that, that clarifies that. And we met maybe a couple of months ago and talked about this issue, and I said, you know, despite the fact that both of these Commissions were saying we really don't want to go with artificial turf, you made the case, and, and David Jones, also our Sustainability Officer, made the case that, you know, let's follow the science. Let's get somebody good to look at the whole story, you know? What goes into producing the artificial turf? What does it take to water it? What, you know? Well, you do have to water artificial turf, because it gets hot. But anyway, all the, all the elements, because it's very complicated, right? Nobody, I think, could stand here and say they know all the pieces of this from cradle to grave and how it impacts the environment, and also, you know, the usability, how many days of play do you get on one versus the other, and all the, you know, and the cost, right? All these issues. So I thought it made sense for us to go do that, and I still do. I think it's, it's good. My only issue here is that staff has selected a vendor, selected a consultant to do this, and I just, I, I'm a little uncomfortable that you're just kind of presenting a name and saying, "We want to do this with these guys." You say, "We've had good experience with them in the past," but when we spoke on the call yesterday, you weren't able to tell me what experience we've, we've had with them in the past. And it's a large sum of money. It's $45,000. I think it behooves us to spend a little bit more time seeing who's out there that can do this kind of work. This is a EH, what is it? E-S-H firm? Environmental?
Environmental Health and Safety.
EHS, and, and firms like that typically do, like OSHA-type stuff. They'll do, like, you know, workplace safety, and, and they'll work on demolitions, and, you know, trying to make sure that the environmental impacts are mitigated in a demolition. They probably can do this, but I think there are a lot of other environmental consulting firms out there that could do this too, and I would just like us to take a little bit more time, look to see who else might be out there, maybe do an RFP, and, and really, and bring it back to the Parks Commission. I know that's not traditional, but I think in this case, because they and the Sustainability Commission said they don't want artificial turf, and we're going to go do a life cycle analysis, and we don't know what we're going to get back, but whatever we get back, I want everybody to believe in it. I want everybody to feel like, yes, this is, you know, trustworthy, right? And, you know, we all know, I mean, your department, the Parks Department, has been planning artificial turf, and I know that you believe artificial turf is going to be easier to manage, it's going to give more playdays. I know, I know that's kind of where you're coming from, right? And other people are coming, like me, coming from a different position, which is, I just don't want fake grass. I want the biodiversity. I want the, the water permeability. I want all the, you know, the cooling that comes with natural products. So we have, it's very possible we get to a point where the public and me don't really trust the outcome of this LCA, and that's why I think it's, it's just would be healthy for us to make sure we're picking somebody that we all kind of are comfortable with. I, I hope that, I hope that makes some sense.
We, Councilmember Brotman, we have reached out to a, a number of different consultants, and two consultants responded, actually, three consultants responded. One was an academic from, I believe, UC Riverside, and she said that it was out of her realm. She's never conducted an LCA. The second consultant did, has conducted LCAs, but, you know, the price was double than what Citadel is charging us. One thing that Citadel is also providing is the triple bottom line analysis also, which is a additional item that I think would benefit and would be a neutral, a neutral party, basically giving staff and Council the information, provide the information to make a decision on natural turf versus artificial turf moving forward.
And, and Mr. Belaninian, your experience working with this firm or with other agencies, what is it?
This firm, they, they have a contract, they're an as-needed consultant with GWP for materials, safety, testing, and asbestos, but they have worked with Burbank Glendale Airport, and they are on the as-needed list for Glendale Unified as well.
And there is no one that specifically does this type of analysis? This would be the first analysis of its type?
First analysis of its type, there has...
Besides, I guess there was one study out of Scandinavia.
In Zurich, I believe.
Zurich, was it? I thought, was, was it?
I believe it was Zurich in 2009.
Not the US.
Not the US.
All right.
It was not the US.
Or not in our climate.
But I believe, if, if I could, Mayor Pro Tem, I think Cal Recycle has, you know, maybe two or three years ago, did, did something along these lines. And then, I know that these guys, Citadel, are planning to outsource some of it to another group up in the Bay Area called Stock.
Stock in Europe.
And are up, so...
Mr. Brotman, I don't want to cut, cut you off prematurely. I'll give you an opportunity to say more if you need to, but I would like to give Mr. Jones an opportunity, because I saw him making his way up to the podium. Is there something that staff wanted to add to this? And then there is a caller I'd like to give an opportunity to?
Sure. I just wanted to mention that, yes, there has been life cycle analyses done. They've been done on, like, very certain aspects, maybe like water use of natural turf versus grass. What we're asking for here, and what we're proposing here is that the life cycle analysis covers a much wider scope from cradle to grave, and a study of that has not been completed, as far as we know. So we just wanted to clarify that point.
And you are comfortable with this firm recommendation?
I am.
We, and Mr. Brotman, would you mind if I, we, I, normally, the consent items are routine unless pulled, and then, in terms of what we do is have a discussion, explanation, and then try to have some clarification as to why it was on there. I understand there's always concerns, but we already had an opportunity for people to call in. There was one caller. I will grant this one caller as well to speak on this item, because it is a Commissioner, and I want to give this Commissioner an opportunity to comment, but we will take no more callers on this item, because then it becomes a action item instead of consent item. So let's go to the caller, and then I'll turn the floor or the mic back to Councilmember Brotman.
Jane Patel, you have three minutes. Go ahead. This is for Item Number 4C. Jane, go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much. Good evening, Council. I just wanted to call in...
I just wanted to call in and say that the Community Services and Parks Department brought a report on artificial turf versus natural turf to the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission in April. It was over 250 pages and included information from an LCA in Zurich. I'm just concerned about spending $45,000 on another LCA when that money could be going to other things in parks that we need. And I'm just confused why we're paying for an LCA when one was already presented to the commission. And the commission did determine that the environmental hazards of artificial turf were great enough that it gave pause for us to recommend artificial turf and rather re-recommended natural turf in lieu of any other offering. So I just wanted to make that statement and also say that the, the Community Services and Parks Department presented a terrific report yesterday to the commission on available land that is off the two freeway in the mountainous area and near the sports center where additional fields could be built. And perhaps that could then create more opportunity for, for playtime for the various leagues if we had additional fields in that area. So thank you so much for hearing my statement.
Thank you. Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, I don't have much more to say. I just would like to see us do a little bit more due diligence on Citadel and other possible consultants before we pull the trigger on them.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Well, as everybody knows, I don't like to spend money on anything unless it's absolutely necessary. But one thing we have to consider, at this time, we are in drought. So artificial turf, which I don't like, of course, much, but I want to see what the result be when they compare. Because, as I asked before, the staff, when you have grass ground, after a while, you have to clean it and redo it, and you have to water it basically every other day or once in three days. Am I right, Mr. Bolanikin?
Yes.
How many days do you water the grass field?
Depending on the field, about three times a week, half hour per station. And each field has a number of stations.
Okay. We are in drought, and I just want to see, somebody would look at both artificial and regular grass field and give me at least some idea that how we have to proceed. That's why I would like to go along with this item. And if I can, if there is no other questions, I would like to move the item.
Well, before, well, we can move that item, but I do have an issue with one of the parks that we have been, and Mr. Galanian is nodding his head because he knows exactly where I'm going to go with this. I think that, I, I think this report will be a good report to have in hand, especially since no one else seems to have done it, and this will be an issue that will come up with other agencies. And for us to have done such a report without, I think it's premature for us to speculate as to what the outcome of it will be. I think that most people agree that artificial turf is not ideal. It is fancy plastic. It has a large carbon footprint. It is not the primary or preferred first preference of any agency or player, for that matter, or athlete. However, we do have a number of parks that are in the pipeline for renovation that have continuously said that, you know, why have we not been renovating these parks that we've approved plans for, such as Fremont? And the answer I received back is that we're still waiting for the determination on this. I will say that my request would be, and I don't know what would be required for this or if this is out of the scope of this discussion, Mr. Garcia, that we move ahead with the plans for Fremont Park. While this RFP, if we vote on this and approve it today, this RFP is being done, or this, rather, report is being done, sorry, not RFP. And when that report is done, because it's going to take a while to have that park fixed, to have it renovated, it can still go to the commission, but we will not have wasted any more time in the interim. The last thing I want is this park, which could have been started on while parks were off limits during COVID to a certain degree, now will be closed for another year, but that won't even happen for another eight months out potentially. So that would be my request. Does that require a second? Is that enough? I know I can't unilaterally give direction, but would any of my colleagues second that to have at least a renovation of Fremont Park proceed while this report is being done?
If, if I may, just procedurally, that would, that would need to come back to council unless it's something that the, it's already, if it's already something that could be approved administratively.
We had already approved it.
Right, right.
The plans for it, and it was supposed to have been in process.
Yeah, if I may, Mayor Protem, Member City Council, the Fremont Park renovation project, the design has been completed. We were ready to go out to bid for that project so that we can hire a contractor. That's when staff took the item to the Parks Commission, and three out of the five commissioners voted not to proceed with that project at this time and to, to delay it for a couple of years, two, three years. I don't recall exactly. So that, that project is what, as I described, at the stage that we can bring to commission, to City Council, it's already been approved by City Council. They adopted the plans and specs. All we have to do is go out to bid, technically.
May I ask a question?
I can't answer the question.
Allow me, allow me to recognize Councilmember Najarian, who has not had an opportunity to speak yet, and we'll follow that with your comments, Mr. Brotman. Go ahead.
Thank you. So there's a couple of things I'd like to say. I do want to agree with the city manager that the design for Fremont Park was approved by this council. Now, how that goes back to a lower-level commission with instructions to council or direction to council to delay, I don't know what rule of operations, you know, that follows, but I don't think that's proper. Perhaps it wasn't proper to even send it to the Parks Commission because council had already made a decision on that. Now, if council wanted to appeal that decision, someone within council, there's a whole process for that. I mean, someone on the winning side has to vote for reconsideration and all that other stuff. So I don't think that's, procedurally, I think there's a flaw in that. Practically, I agree with Mr. Kasakian that this was approved a long time, this, a long time ago. It's unfortunate we couldn't have gotten started during COVID and gotten this under the way. The park, whichever configuration is accepted, is going to be out of commission for months, if not a year or more. The issue at hand, oh, I mean, to just address some of the speakers, I don't think it's in council's prerogative to put $45,000 into a educational fund at Glendale High School to teach, I forgot what the class was. I don't think we do that sort of thing. The issue is, I think that what Mr. Brotman is ranging, is that, raising is that this consultant is somehow either biased or not competent, not having the proper experience to do this sort of report. Mr. Jones told us, and there had been some discussion bouncing around in the community, that these reports had already been done. There are existing reports that address this. But Mr. Jones stated that it is not a complete life cycle. It was one or two components of that. So I think this has to be done. In terms of the cost, the good news is that we did have a discussion with Supervisor Bargher's staff this weekend at the Contract Cities Conference. And we explained to them what we were doing. We explained to them that such a study could be groundbreaking and could be broadly used by the county and throughout the state if it has not been done before. And they seemed interested in contributing to that effort. So it's very likely that the $45,000 price tag would be reduced significantly by the county. And presumably, the county would also run it through their vetting and their due diligence to make sure that a report that they're paying partial, partially for is going to be one that is valid and credible and have use outside of the borders of Glendale. So I would agree with Mr. Kasakian's idea. Let's, let's go forward. Let's see what this report says. At that point, we can attack the hell out of it. I mean, I'm fine with that. I mean, that's, that's only proper if there are omissions, errors, et cetera. But at this point, we're just asking this group to go forward, which consists of, I know the Arup firm is a very well-recognized engineering firm. And I'm not sure about the Stoke firm. But I, I'm going to presume and assume that staff did their due diligence to vet this firm. I don't want to send it to, someone said, "Send it back to the Sustainability Commission" to see if they approve this firm. I, you know, I think we're spinning our wheels. Let's go forward. Let's see what their recommendations are. And perhaps it's something we can use going forward, once, once those studies and facts are in, to go forward with our next field renovation or next field project.
Mr. Galanian.
Yeah. Mayor Protem Kasakian, Member City Council, just wanted to add that our intention is for this consultant to provide a recommendation as to which, whether artificial turf or natural grass should be used. It's essentially going to provide life cycle analysis of both of these types of fields, pros and cons, and compare the two to each other, and it will be entirely up to council to move forward. We have three other projects in the works, one, the other one has been designed as well, that had planned to use artificial turf. So this is not intended for Fremont Park only.
We understand.
And this, and this report will have mitigation measures that we can put in place if we move forward with artificial turf that will lessen the impacts of using artificial turf in our fields. So we have other three projects that has previously been discussed at council. We can certainly use this, this report and the analysis in the report so that we can make intelligent decisions when it comes to a choice.
I think that one of the callers, the commissioners, stated about making the use of this, giving it priority to Glendale users, et cetera. I mean, this is not a, one, I mean, there's a multi-pronged approach to addressing this issue of which there are many, many components. Of course, there's also the issue of water usage during a time of a drought, as well as the impact of having something, a product, that is manufactured using fossil fuels and the harm that that causes. So I think the report will be fine. By the way, $45,000, I can assure our residents and viewers that just watering our fields a year costs at least in a couple of hundred thousand range, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Bolanikin, right? And that's a recurring annual expenditure. So I think this would be, let's not get focused on the cost of a report. Let's really focus on what we can glean from what the findings are of the report. Are there any other comments, or would anyone like to make a motion on the site?
I did, would either.
Well, Mr. Agajanian has made a motion. I will grant Mr. Brotman one more comment. Mr. Brotman, please.
Yeah, so it, well, question first. Is the county going to be vetting this firm Citadel before agreeing to participate in this? Are we, or are we going to wait for that? Or by voting today, are we going to basically just enter into that contract with Citadel? And that's it? Because what Mr. Najarian was suggesting is that they're going to do their own due diligence.
No, Councilmember Brotman, I don't believe that was the case. The county will essentially, because they can, any other agencies within the county can use this report, they will enter into a reimbursement agreement with the city to pay for a portion of the cost of this consultant.
They will, they will offset some of the $45,000 because this would be a benefit to the 88 other cities in the county.
Okay, but they're not, okay, they're not going to do any kind of diligence upfront.
Well, I think, if I could interrupt, I think the idea is that they're going to see who we've picked. If they agree and accept that as a legitimate consultant, then they're going to kick in the money. If they see, if they think we've got some quack, you know, I don't imagine that they would do that. But I don't think they want to hold up the process to say, "Wait till we go through our county." I mean, the county is even slower than the city in many of those things.
Well, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Brotman.
No, just the last thing was on your, on your suggestion about Fremont Park. So is it, I mean, I'm fine starting the ball rolling on that, but can we keep that question of what the field is made of, an open question that, that can be addressed, you know, once we get this life cycle analysis? I mean, if we can, then for sure. Let's, let's get every other part of that in, in play. And then when we get this report back and we're ready to make a decision, then we can, you know, move quickly on that.
Mr. Galanian.
Yeah. Mayor Protem Kasakian, Member City Council, Councilmember Brotman. If we start the process tomorrow, let's say next week, it will take us a good six to eight months to bring a report back to council with a recommendation to award a contract to a selected contractor. By then, this, this report will have been completed, and we will have a good sense of what's in the analysis and what they portray. And we can present that to council. And if, for some reason, council decides to not use artificial turf, we have to go back to the drawing board and change the, those two fields. The worst-case scenario, install irrigation systems, and then we'll have to do a change order with the contractor. Can it be done? Yes, but it will be costlier than if we change the plans today. It will cost us even today if we change the design. But to do a change order, it may be a little costlier. But it can be done. The, the good thing is that at least we don't have to wait nine months to, to get, eight to nine months to get this report and then move forward with the Fremont Park bidding.
I, I understand that there is a healthy dose of amount of skepticism in the public. I understand that there is concerns, but I also would ask our viewers, our residents, and those interested in this issue to have faith that we, as a council, as people who live in this city, who use the parks, who have families who use the parks, who also care for the environment, are trying to do the best for our city and that this is not a way of trying to somehow circumvent certain policy or momentum that we've gained as a city in some of the great accomplishments that we've made. But we do, we, I, I do want to proceed with this. And there was a motion. I'll wait to see if there's a second, and then we will proceed.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. With that, I'll call for the roll call from other clerk.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine and Mayor Protem Kasakian.
Yes. Thank you. Next is City Council and staff comments. Before, well, who would like to share their comments first?
Either way.
Everyone's passing the book, if not, Councilmember Agajanian?
Okay, I do not have any comments as this.
All right. Well, I would like to ask that we adjourn this evening's meeting in memory of another great citizen individual who called Glendale home. Ms. Safi Tufenkyan, Ms. Savi Tufenkyan, passed away on August 25 in her home in Glendale. It is with great sadness that we share this with our community. She was a very devoted member of the Glendale community, of the Armenian-American community. Savi was born in Karadakh, Iran, to Vahrashag and Virgin Shirvanyan, survivors of the Armenian genocide. She received her high school education in Beit Mary, Lebanon, and received a scholarship to attend. to attend American International College in Massachusetts, where she graduated in 1954. Savi and her younger brother Kosty moved to California in 1955. Together, they founded Western Disposal Company, later known as Western Waste Industries. She married Ralph Tufenkyan of Los Angeles in 1956. Savi was a kind and generous person who was eager to help her community, local and abroad. After the tragic loss of her son Richard in 1990, Savi and Ralph established the Richard Tufenkyan Preschool, which remained closest to her heart to the end. In addition to the preschool, she has played a major role in the founding and continuation of many Armenian organizations, such as the Armenian International Women's Association, Orphan and Child Care, USC, the AMA Orphan and Child Care, the USC Institute of Armenian Studies, and many, many more. Words cannot express the void left in the lives of those who loved her. Savi is survived by her husband of 63 years, Ralph Tufenkyan, son Greg and Caroline Tufenkyan, and daughter Sandra and Paul Kalim Kiaryan. She is cherished by her grandchildren, Sarah, Lisa, and Lena, and their spouses, and Sam, Michael, and Max. She was also blessed with three great-grandchildren, Nika, Ani, and Ambrose. Her contributions to our community and her legacy will live on forever, and our sincere sympathies to Savi's family and friends. Please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. There was a very beautiful and touching service for her at the United Armenian Congregational Church, where her grandkids spoke and you could see the outpouring of support and love from the community for Ms. Tufenkyan and everything that she's done for us in Glendale and beyond. So with that, I would like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Ms. Savi Tufenkyan. Also, today, or this week kicks off Glendale Tech Week. Glendale Tech Week is here and it's an exciting, even though the in-person and virtual programming is not as exciting as the in-person events that we've had, whether you are a young entrepreneur or an emerging science or technology startup, Glendale Tech Week has plenty of options to network with like-minded tech professionals. Now, while many of the events took place yesterday and earlier today, Pitch Fest and the closing awards party is taking place tomorrow, Wednesday, 4:30 to 8:00 p.m. in a hybrid format. So watch the 10 finalists compete in front of a live virtual audience, angel investors and VC judges for the Pitch Fest, the Pitch Fest prize package. You can also celebrate tech at our closing awards party through a festive networking environment. Visit glendaletechweek.com/breakthrough to RSVPN to receive event details. Also, one more event I wanted to announce, Glendale Educational Foundation, the Glendale Educational Foundation's 17th Annual State of the Schools Breakfast will be broadcast live on September 30 from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. from the Glendale Civic Auditorium. Breakfast boxes, courtesy of Portos, will be available to drive-through pickup at the Glendale Unified School District office from 6:45 a.m. to 7:45 a.m., just before they go live at 8:00 a.m. As you guessed it, that means it's a virtual event. The sponsors this year are Pacific BMW, the Walt Disney Company, Karen D. White Memorial Fund, and the Jewel City Group. You can also become a sponsor by calling 818-247-0466. I would like to ask staff for, now that SB 9 has been signed or will be signed until I believe it's signed, I'd like to, staff to proceed quickly with an RFP for the East-West Glendale Historical Resources. A lot of these housing laws could potentially eliminate many structures and buildings and resources that are historic and critical to the fabric of our, our character of our city. So there are protections in place for designation of historic structures. So I would like to see if anyone of my colleagues would second my request to have this done as soon as possible.
Yes, I'd happy to second that request.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
I would like to third that with a friendly amendment, hopefully, that staff bring us options to, to limit the devastation that this is going to present to the community.
Impacts devastations, yes. Thank you. I think it would warrant a discussion in the coming months as to how we will brace for these pieces of legislation. In addition to that, today marks the 30th anniversary of independence for the Young Republic of Armenia. Although it has a history spanning many millennia, this marks the 30th anniversary of its declaring itself free from communism and the rule of the Soviet Union. So congratulations to all those celebrating this important milestone. And also, two more items. Hispanic Heritage Month is this month, and I know that we voted to name the community room across the street in the police department after one of our first Latino mayors, Rick Reyes, one of our first, I think there was maybe Carl Rajio and others. But because we had named it during, we made that decision to name it after him during COVID, we never had a ceremony. And I'd like to ask staff to see with now, with more lenient restrictions about, on gatherings, to at least have something to properly recognize that. And I think it would be something nice to do during Hispanic Heritage Month or right after, perhaps in November. And lastly, I would like an update. I would like us, as a council, if any of my colleagues would second this, to revisit Rockhaven's issue. And I know that Senator Portantino had secured some funding for that, and I know that the community is very anxious to know more about what is happening. So I would like to see if we could have an update here in open session as to what that grant or that monies that were secured mean and what next steps should be.
Right. Mayor Protam Kasakian, staff and I actually have been working on plans. We wanted to bring to council options. I was, I was in communication with Senator Portantino as of yesterday, actually. So we were trying to figure out the details of this grant, and my staff is working with his staff. So once that's ready, we, we should be able to bring it to council in the next few weeks. You don't need a second for that.
All right. That is all. Do any of my colleagues again second bite at the apple? No? All right. Moving on to the next item, number six.
Community, community event announcements, I do have two callers on the line. Ara Manukyan, you're live, you have three minutes. Ara, go ahead.
Thank you, Protam Mayor Kasakian. First of all, I'd like to extend my condolences to Mayor Levine for her recent loss. And also, since you mentioned Savi Tufenkyan, who is a old-time family friend of our family, I've known her since I was in diapers, my condolences to her family also. And the reason I'm calling is to announce an event that's going on tomorrow. It is a virtual public hearing that the City of Glendale is putting on, and it's regarding a small cell project, which the city is considering. And the members of the community and people that work there and are patrons of Glendale should definitely attend. It's going to be at 6:00 p.m. There is a link that we've actually put up on our, on one of our videos on YouTube. So if you go to www.5gfreeglendale, that's five G as in George, F-R-E-E, and then glendale.com, you'll see in the description a link to that meeting. And I want to bring the City Council's attention, since I've got you on the phone and I've got a minute left at least. The U.S. Court of Appeals of the District of Columbia ruled on August 13, 2021, that the FCC, quote, "failed to provide a reasoned explanation for its determination that its guidelines adequately protect against the harmful effects of exposure to radio, radio frequency radiation unrelated to cancer." And the court went on to order the FCC to, quote, "provide a reasoned explanation for its determination that its guidelines adequately protect against harmful effects of exposure to radio frequency radiation unrelated to cancer." And that link that I gave you to www.5gfreeglendale.com also goes to July 22, 2020, Glendale 5G Study Session, which I would encourage people to watch this because it has all the information, which actually this court ruling has asked, which is, you know, why, what, what are the harmful effects besides cancer that it causes? So again, I encourage people to attend tomorrow at 6:00 p.m., September 22. Go to www.5gfreeglendale.com. Thank you so much.
Next caller.
Tony Passarella, you're live, Tony, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, councilmembers. Tony Passarella. You know, I, I know you folks feel like you're doing the right thing for the community in promoting the vaccines, but, you know, I've been railing about this for several months and about the whole COVID thing for a year and a half, and I deeply oppose your position. And the evidence is coming out more and more every day that these vaccines are, are literally killing people, injuring people. Rochelle Walensky, the CDC director, even comes out publicly and says the vaccine is waning. Now, my presentation is somewhat stunted tonight because, well, last week, we had technical difficulties in playing a video, and I have foreknowledge that the video I had planned to play tonight from a Steve Kirsch also will not play. So I don't know what's going on there. But anyway, some, the evidence here, the FDA, there was eight hours of testimony given last Friday live. You could, anybody could have watched it. The FDA's Vaccine and Related Biological Products Advisory Committee, they voted 16 to 2 after eight hours of testimony to go against Biden's booster, COVID booster shot program. Now, the video I wanted to play was from a Steve Kirsch. And the 16 to 2, these were doctors slash whistleblowers giving, giving their testimony. Steve Kirsch said, though, since we can't play the video, just let me quote him if I may, "Vaccines are killing more people than they are saving." That's a direct quote from Steve Kirsch, who presented his testimony Friday. Another quote from him, "Heart attacks occur 71 times more often than in any other vaccine in history." So folks, the evidence is out there. It's not, you're not going to find it on CNN, MSNBC, Google, Twitter, or YouTube, but it's heavily censored there. And apparently, I may be censored too. I don't know that for sure. But I'm, I'm asking you to stop the promotion of these vaccines. You're going to be, I'm warning you, I have been warning you, you're going to be on the wrong side of history. You're going to have to be held accountable when people figure out that the neighbor is getting sick, their, their son, their daughter, their mother, their father, as the direct result of the vaccine and not, and not because of COVID. This is what's happening, there's video after video on BitChute. This is where you have to go to find the truth, people, in the listening audience. BitChute, brighhtyon, B-R-I-G-H-T-E-O-N dot com, Rumble, TikTok, ban dot video, Telegram, and Gab. If you go there, you'll find the truth. And so that's all I have to say. Please, please.
Thank you, Tony, your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Do not smoke the vaccine. Thank you.
Mr. Mohill, you have three minutes. Mike Mohill, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ara. Councilmembers, my name is Mike Mohill. First, I'd like to express my condolences to Mayor Paula Devine and the passing of her husband. You know, we have taxes all over the city of Glendale, we, and the state, we, they, and they have, we taxed, and we have registration for cars, we have motorcycles, because these, these vehicles all use the roads of the city and the state of California. But for some reason, why do we give bicycles the pass? Don't they ride? And don't they wear out the roads and the sidewalks of the city of Glendale and throughout the state of California? Why don't we start taxing these bicycle riders? I mean, we have all these line marking in the streets nowadays, bicycle lanes, bicycle lanes, but you never see a bicycle. That's the funny part. I rarely see a bicycle rider, but yet we spend millions of dollars of striping the city streets and posting signs. So if these, so if the bicycles would like to have all these signs and posts, let them pay a fee. And I let the City Council suggest what fee that would be. I would suggest at least a minimum of $100. That's the small amount to pay for all the uses that they are, that bicycle riders are costing the taxpayers of Glendale and other places. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Are there any more calls?
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Okay, we will not be taking any more calls on item six.
I just have a comment, Mr. Kasakian?
Yes, Mr. Agajanian.
I mean, I just, Mr. Passarella, this is the second week is coming and complaining why his video clip is not playing. I just want to say that staff, what's the reason we are not playing his video clip? Although I'm not proponent of what he's saying, because I'm reporting every night, in California, 85% of those who are 18 and over, 85%, they have, they have taken one dose of coronavirus vaccine, and 70% they already taken the second dose of vaccine. But however, I don't want to be one of those people that if there is somebody has some other ideas and I come, we create a situation that there is something going on, a conspiracy is going on here, and we don't want his videotape to be aired. That's why I'm asking the staff, what's the reason for, this is the second week that we are unable to run the video clip?
Councilmember, Councilmember Agajanian, Tony Passarella sent me several videos, video links, which were not working, and I did explain to Tony today that we're having issues with it. And I did tell him that we will work on it, and then if he wants to present it next week, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. I'm satisfied with the explanation.
All right, thank you. Next item?
Next item would be seven, adoption of ordinance, 7A Management Services regarding an ordinance of the City of Glendale, adding chapter 8.46 to Title 8 of the Glendale Municipal Code to in connection with regulations for the distribution of disposal foodware accessories brought to us by Councilmember Brotman on September 14, 2021.
Okay.
Do I have to second? Do we need to, this to be seconded?
Yes, it does.
Mayor Protam, before we move on, we do have a caller for this item.
All right, let's hear from the caller, please.
David Juarez, you have three minutes, David. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Hello, Mayor Protam, councilmembers. My name is David Juarez, and I'm with the California Restaurant Association. I am calling 907A. Councilmembers, we appreciate the spirit in which you are considering policies to reduce the distribution of single-use food service ware, but we ask that the concerns of the Russian community are taken into account. We ask that any ordinance that is considered allows foodware accessories items to be distributed upon the request of the customer, upon offer of an employee, and by the use of self-serving dispensers. We have worked directly with LA County, with Supervisor Shilah Q on this, with the City of Pasadena and O'Hambray, all who have adopted similar ordinances and have acquitted our recommendations. We also work very closely with Assemblymember Wendy Carrillo on her Assembly Bill 1276, which is a very similar policy to that of LA County. AB 1276 passed both the State Assembly and Senate, and now depending on the governor's signature. And we've been speaking to the governor's office on this, and we have every reason to believe that he will sign it. Our goal is to really have the entire state aligned on this, in order to have consistency throughout the state, but also to not confuse restaurateurs, especially those that might have two, three different restaurants in different jurisdictions. So for those reasons, if the city of Glendale chooses to move forward today with an ordinance, I'm hoping our recommendations align to distribution of food service accessories items upon the request of the customers, upon offer of an employee, and by the use of self-serving dispensers will be considered. With that, I just want to thank the councilmembers for your time, and have a great rest of your meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Juarez. Thank you, Ms. Juarez.
Mayor Protem, that was the only caller for this item. Would you like me to take more callers, or would you want me to stop?
There are no more callers?
There's no more callers. Looks like it's ringing right now, but I can't tell who it's.
Well, we'll see if this is on this item. In the meantime, do.
I can move the item in the meantime. Is that all right?
Moved by Councilmember Brotman?
Before, before we move on, it is for this item. It's.
Let's get a second for it if we can.
Yeah, is there a second for this item, Mr. Agajanian? I see you.
I seconded it. Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a second.
Now, let's listen to this caller.
Elise Calcyon?
Calcyon.
Calfyon, you're live, Elise. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem Kasakian and city council members and staff. I wanted to call on behalf of the Glendale Environmental Coalition to thank you for taking this step to stop the flow of a single-use plastic waste into our landfills and oceans. Thank you very much for this ordinance.
All right. Thank you for the call.
Thank you.
There is a motion and a second. Anyone wish to comment or any discussion on this to the caller from the Restaurant Owners Association or the Restaurant Association? Now, in terms of the period when people can still provide, there is a period by which restaurants are going to be educated. I believe we agreed on, how many days was that? Hundred and how many?
Hundred and eighty. Hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty days, correct? So roughly about six months or so. So I think that that should be ample time. I think beyond that, everyone should be on the same page. Certainly, I had concerns about the self-serve stations as well, but not as a permanent fixture. And I don't know if that agrees or disagrees, but with that, we do have a motion and a second for the ordinance as was drafted and brought forward and was introduced by Councilmember Brotman. Let us please have a roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine? Mayor Protem Kasakian?
Yes. Moving on to action items, can you please read the next item into the record?
Eight A would be Glendale Water and Power Regarding Adoption of Specifications for Proposed Grayson Repowering Project, Unit Nine Separation, and a Request for Proposals for the Demolition and Site Improvements. One Resolution Adopting Specifications Number Three nine zero four for the Proposed Grayson Repowering Project, Unit Nine Separation, Directing City Clerk to Advertise for Bids to Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Authorizing the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power to Issue a Request for Proposal for the Proposed Grayson Repowering Project, Demolition and Site Improvement.
Staff?
Mayor Protem Kasakian, members of city council. We actually have two items combined into one as part of this presentation. I'm going to ask Mark Young, or General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, to walk you through both these items with a brief description of the scope of work for both and the action steps that we need to take. There are two resolutions that we are asking city council to adopt.
Mayor Protem, members of city council, Mark Young. First, I'd like to say that by taking action on this item, it doesn't mean that we're going to be doing anything or circumvent the Grayson repower. This is in preparation for any actions that this council is going to make on the repower. We're trying to get pricing for this so that we can give you a better understanding of the alternatives during the environmental impact report approval meeting in the future. First section is to be able to isolate number nine unit from the old power plant building. In two thousand and three, two thousand and four, when it was built, the control systems were brought into the old Grayson building. And what we would be doing is moving the controls into a temporary site in order for us to be able to have a standalone operation so that we can still operate this unit during construction and the demolition phase if you do so choose. The second, the second part of this action is to dispense with competitive bidding for an RFP for demolition and site improvements. This is a very complicated process, and we believe that dispensing with competitive bidding and putting out an RFP allows experts to be able to identify the things that are needed in order for that to happen. In the event, like I said, in the event that there's no action taking on the repower, there would be no action on these items, even though the bids and the dispense with competitive RFP will have been done. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Mayor Protem, I do not have callers on this item.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that?
Yes.
Councilmember Brotman?
I wanted to check, Mark. As far as isolating unit nine, I think, and I wasn't clear on this, but I think I looked back at the staff report, and I think it's clear. So if we isolate unit nine from the rest of Grayson, units one through five would no longer be operable. Is that correct?
No, sir. The operation of number nine is specifically to operate, turn on and off, ramp up the unit, ramp down the unit. It has nothing to do with any of the other units.
But the staff report says, on page two, it says the other units would no longer be able to operate after this work is completed.
At the demolition of that building.
After the demolition?
Yes, because it's two parts.
Not the separation?
Not the separation, correct.
Okay, so we can go ahead and separate, and we don't need to make a decision on units one through five?
That's correct.
Even though I know the likelihood is we're not going to want to use them because they're very polluting and all the rest of it, but potentially, we could, we could, we could use those. And I know that there's, you've talked before about this Rule eleven thirty-five from AQMD, which says that we can't operate them because they're too dirty.
That's correct.
And, and I had asked you, and maybe if you're prepared to answer, you could do that, this low-use exemption issue that could potentially allow us to use it at some level. Now, maybe it's not really relevant to this discussion, so perhaps we hold that and discuss it another time unless you, unless you want to describe it.
The low-use exemption would be for the other units? This unit would be able to meet the current AQMD standards of eleven thirty-five?
Number nine.
It just needs to be, just it needs to be tuned, and the tuning is relatively, everything is complicated in power production. But given that said, it's relatively simple to tune it to be able to meet the AQMD standards. So eleven thirty-five really talks about boilers, three, four, five, and eight A and eight B C.
Okay, so that clarifies, because I thought, I thought if this was going to make one to five operable, I wanted to discuss that question with you. But if, as you say, just separating unit nine does not make one to five operable, we have time to discuss that another, another time, yes.
That's correct.
So that's, okay, then I think I probably don't have any other questions.
Any other questions? I know Councilmember Najarian just stepped out, but Councilmember Agajanian, do you have any questions on this item?
Just, I raised my concern that when we are going to bid this, the balance of it, not the unit nine. I just want to see that we send the RFP and see who will be, have the enough experience and bid on the project and not come back and say, okay, we are not going to consider the price only. There will be some other items we will consider in order to pick up the right contractor. That bothers me because that becomes subjective, in my opinion. Some sort of subjective to pick up the contractor. Where when we say what we want, the specification, the specification which we write is clear, what we want to do, and get the bid and compare the price, and maybe the experience only, and not to get other factors in picking up the contractor, I would rather to see that way. But the penalty staff is offering otherwise. That's where I have concern with.
All right. Any other comments? Councilmember Najarian? All right, if there aren't, is there any, would anyone like to move the items, move the resolutions?
I'll move eight, A, one, and two.
Is there a second for these?
On which one? On both?
Yes. Is there no willingness to? Yes. Councilmember Brotman?
No, I can, I can second those.
Second these? All right. Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Reluctantly, yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine? And Mayor Protem Kasakian?
Yes. Let's have the next item, please.
Next item is Public Works Regarding State of the Community Forest. One, Motion Providing Direction to Staff.
Thank you. And again, for anyone viewing this from home, this will be a general discussion. There is no specific action to come out of this. Council will make recommendations to staff regarding the report. Staff, you may proceed. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Kasakian, members of city council. I am Lauren Click, Glendale's Urban Forester with Public Works. I'm here to discuss some items that were originally raised in the May city council member, May city council meeting regarding our community forest. In this update. One second, please. I'll continue. In this update, Public Works will provide recommendations on tree canopy coverage, tree planting and watering, funding strategies, and existing forest needs. And finally, recommendations on our tree protection ordinances. To begin with Glendale canopy coverage, here is a detailed map of South Glendale's census tract-level tree canopy coverage. A full list of census tracts and canopy totals is in the accompanying written report to this presentation. As a reminder, staff estimates that tree canopy coverage is twenty percent citywide, and Public Works recommends adopting a citywide goal of twenty-five percent canopy coverage, meaning that a full one-quarter of the city would be shaded by both public and private trees. On this map here, the lighter shades represent lower canopy coverages, which are concentrated fully in South Glendale. La Crisana, the Verdugo Woodlands, and the canyons, which are cut off on this map, are all above our recommended twenty-five percent canopy coverage in terms of that census tract level. For example, Chevy Chase and Glen Oaks Canyon both have over forty percent canopy coverage. And La Crisana is estimated to have thirty-two percent. We will use this data to help inform our planting locations to more effectively raise the citywide canopy. Census tracts obviously vary in size. Some, particularly in the San Fernando corridor, are heavily industrial and have few public planting or private planting locations. So a citywide goal helps to equalize these variations in geography. Planting trees in these areas with the fewest current trees also goes the furthest in terms of cost benefit, increasing the canopy coverage. So for example, one new large tree on a block with no existing trees will provide more benefits and also more canopy than one additional tree on a block already full of those. Now, in terms of what the city should be planting, I'd like to show an example of a wrong tree, not in Glendale, and an example of a right tree that is in Glendale. So on the left, we have a wrong tree. This is a large tree that is underneath power lines, and it's in a parkway that's smaller than its trunk versus the Glendale right tree on the right, which is a large tree in adequate space that's able to retain its full canopy mature size. Trees, of course, can be planted more closely together, but the ideal is to space trees to the natural spread of their canopy, which can help to prevent issues of pest and poor structure. Public Works has been planning in terms of species, climate-ready species, for some time, as we do stay up to date with new research on this topic. So appropriate trees are chosen with many criteria, with existing neighborhood character taken into consideration, as well as utilities, grow space, wind and drought tolerance, irrigation and soil preference, and so on. Our designated species list offers up to three species for the varying conditions found on each block. So Public Works does aim to plant species with the lowest water needs wherever possible as well, just to make that clear. The council-approved Measure S funding for tree planting this year will focus on planting these right drought-tolerant trees in the areas with the lowest canopy coverage. Additionally, we'd like to plant these within a certain distance of freeways to maximize those benefits to the city. And we also plan to review the recent bus shelter survey to determine which stops to prioritize in the future for the maximum shading benefits of planting for our community. Again, with tree planting, the Measure S funding that council approved will go a long way in helping us to regain the thousands of trees lost over the ten years and beyond that. Public Works expects to plant seven hundred and fifty street trees this year thanks to Measure S. So the chart on the screen here is the same chart that you saw in May. However, it's been updated to show the expected tree plantings for this year. These trees will reduce the time that's needed to recover a canopy deficit by a full ten years. So with Measure S, Public Works had estimated, or Public Works now estimates eight years of concentrated planting efforts would be required, rather than the ten originally brought to council in May. Obviously, to attain canopy coverage in the long term, additional funding would still be needed to sustain increased planting efforts at seven hundred and fifty trees per year, which is four hundred and fifty trees more than we currently plant. And those would be able to regain our lost canopy since twenty-ten, and again, eight years. Now, regarding tree watering, property owners are responsible for the general appearance of the public right-of-way, and that does include tree watering, as well as weeding and other aspects. Public Works recommends that this ordinance not be changed. Property owners being responsible for the right-of-way instills a sense of ownership and community stewardship, and it's a critical component of a healthy urban forest for people to feel connection with the street tree outside of their property. Public Works also lacks the capacity to provide water to each tree across the city, and we can only provide supplemental water for existing or planned new trees. During times of drought even, of course, all trees need water. It's critical that residents are aware of the need to water even drought-tolerant trees, especially as they're becoming established, especially if those trees have been used to drought irrigation and that irrigation has been cut back. But oftentimes, a tree might only require a quarter of the water of even a ten-square-foot piece of lawn. So a healthy tree also provides important benefits in terms of water saving, in terms of the shade and energy savings that it can provide. So included on this slide also is the funding that would be required to water these additional four hundred and fifty trees, which would again be outside of existing Public Works capacity. That would be a hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, and that would be using our proposed cost and water-effective method of adding the green water bags, as we discussed in May's meeting. One other point I'd like to make on watering is in terms of our irrigated city medians. Generally, anywhere that recycled line runs, recycled water line runs, city trees are on that recycled water. GWP provided an estimate that the recycled water system makes up fifty-three percent of all city irrigation lines, and Public Works has estimated that thirty-eight percent of our city irrigated park and median trees are on recycled water. Also, since twenty-eleven, Public Works has used recycled water to hand-water trees and our existing contracts with West Coast Arborist mandate recycled water as well. Turning to maintenance, as shown at the previous discussion, we expect due to current funding levels, the city will be behind in terms of regular maintenance by twelve thousand eight hundred trees without additional funding. So in eleven years, when we would have normally completed two cycles of, that would be one year under our contract currently, and at the end of two full cycles of trimming, we will actually be behind by over twenty-two thousand trees. As mentioned in May, Public Works would require an additional four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars annually dedicated to maintenance to return to that previous level of trimming, which is again the recommended cycle of six years between inspections and trims for each city tree. Regular maintenance also does help to manage the impacts of a drought. It reduces dying canopy so trees can continue on with the canopy they have left and also retain the trees we do have by ensuring structural health by preventing broken limbs that may require total tree removal. So in some of all those, those numbers I quoted earlier, additional annual funding of seven hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars would enable Public Works to return to a regular schedule of tree maintenance, as well as plant and water, and additional four hundred and fifty trees on top of our normal planting levels in a way that we believe would close the canopy gap to meet our recommended twenty-five percent coverage goal and also return our canopy to the twenty-ten levels. Now, in terms of the twenty-five percent canopy goal I mentioned, I'd like to comment on a twenty-twelve study that was focusing on the city of LA. It determined that the city of LA had lost five percent of its canopy over the previous decade, and it would be about a half percent each year. So we looked at our situation in Glendale and determined they are our neighbors, and we have experienced similar situations in terms of archery loss as our neighbors. similar situations in terms of archery loss as our neighbors. So on our estimation, we consider that we likely lost 5% of our canopy coverage in the last 10 years. So our recommendation of a concerted maintenance, planting and watering effort over the next decade is also based on this factor. To plant 7,500 new trees over the course of the decade, or the 750 trees each year, will grow our canopy to a decade ago, to 2010, and we anticipate that those trees will grow to lead to a 5% canopy coverage increase, again, to that 25% goal that we're recommending. Again, focusing these planting efforts in areas with the lowest canopy coverage is the most efficient and cost-effective way to increase canopy. This example on the slide is East Glen Oaks Boulevard, just to the east of Verdugo Road, which can easily fit many large drought tolerant trees in these parkways, when currently there's not many, and we've lost some in the last decade as well. In terms of canopy coverage, the satellite imagery that's used for these studies is typically updated every few years. So Public Works will monitor for new data captures, to chart progress, assess trends, and see if there's new studies bringing new information to us. Turning now to funding strategies, Public Works actively does pursue particularly grant programs. 550 additional trees have been planted in the last 10 years due to grant awards, and we also currently have an outstanding application for a 500-tree project, as well as our upcoming Arbor Day tree planting in March. In terms of donations, the most well-known donation program is, of course, our Arbor Day event in partnership with Community Services and Parks in Glendale Beautiful. However, we do have the welcome issue where many parks are becoming full of trees, and so if donors choose to, they can direct their funds towards street tree planting if they desire. Residents can also donate funds directly to Public Works, though that goes directly into the general fund. In terms of public sponsorships, Public Works has also successfully partnered with many local organizations in recent years, from the Glendale Youth Alliance to neighborhood HOAs for specific neighborhood tree planting or tree care projects. Just last year, Public Works partnered with the local nonprofit Northeast Trees and the Glendale Unified School District to go in for two large planting grants. Unfortunately, these weren't successful due to delays associated with COVID, but will continue to cultivate these and other partnerships. Finally, turning to our existing tree protection ordinances. Public Works surveyed and expanded 20 LA County cities of similar size and character of Glendale. That's up from the 10 at our May presentation, and we surveyed the protection ordinance, ordinances there. We found that half of the communities do not have any private tree protections, including Burbank, Santa Monica and Long Beach. 10 communities do protect at least some native species such as ourselves or the city of LA, and only six protect additional non-native species. Examples of that are Pasadena and Pomona. After assessing more of our neighbors, Public Works does not recommend revising ordinances protect additional private trees. For one, Glendale already does protect our most common and our largest private trees, those being the oak and the sycamore, as well as protecting every public tree. In cities that do have many private trees protected, independent arborist reports are taken at face value, meaning if a tree is recommended for removal, it is removed. But because our ordinance, our indigenous tree ordinance's intent is to preserve trees, Public Works and planting staff can find ways to save these trees by using the reports to help owners modify development plans. However, adding additional private trees to protection might make this detailed oversight impossible and will require significant SNAP resources across multiple departments. On the other hand, heritage programs, in which an individual tree is certified as protected, usually for historical or ecological reasons, these programs often only apply to city-owned trees. Thankfully, because the city already protects its public trees, such a program would be redundant. In cities that might have a private heritage tree program, these are actually native species, such as in West Covina, and again, we are protecting those. Santa Monica, which does have a public heritage tree program, limits that to admitting five trees per year for protected status, and a city commission must provide detailed oversight with reviews and voting and consultation with city staff. So in conclusion, Public Works recommends that we set a 25% tree canopy goal citywide, which to realistically achieve would require return to our previous six-year trimming cycle with additional sustained planting and watering efforts totaling to 750 trees each year. This would require an additional annual funding of $760,622. With this, we anticipate to be able to return our canopy to the 2010 levels, and thus to raise our canopy coverage to 25%. Finally, Public Works recommends no changes to our existing watering or tree protection ordinances due to their efficacy. Of course, I'm happy to take any questions regarding this presentation of the report.
Do any of my colleagues want to, I know that my colleagues want to ask questions. Who would like to go first?
I have, I have a few questions. I'll, I'll hold comments, but just to ask you a few questions.
Sure.
My main question is, on the 750-tree schedule up from 300, right, so you're saying that in eight years, if we're planning at that rate, and we're not, I guess we're not losing any more trees than, than we're losing today, that in eight years, we can get back to where we were in 2010, that's what you're saying? But to get to that 25% number, that's eight years, or you're saying another, that would be after 10 years, or can you just flesh that out a little?
Mayor Protam Kusakian, members of city council, councilmember Rotman, yes, we're, we're saying that it would take the 10 years of concerted planting effort, including this years of planting, to get us to what we believe those trees would grow to, to reach 25%.
To reach that 25%?
That's correct.
And then, as far as this 25% goal, now, this would be an average across the entire city. It would not mean necessarily that every census tract is going to be at 25, but I know that your intention is to focus on those census tracts with particularly low level of tree cover. Are we able to set out any kind of minimum goals? I mean, are we able to say, you know, no census tract will be below 20% or 15%, you know, can we get to that level of granularity? Because, you know, having, you know, having an average goal doesn't really tell the story, because we've got places like Duke Magin and, and these other large, you know, open space, you know, Chevy Chase Canyon, Glen Oaks Canyon, and everywhere like that. So can we do something like that?
Mayor Protam Kusakian, members of city council, councilmember Rotman, the, the analysis that we did for canopy coverage does exclude these most remote areas that are not in urban areas. So for example, Duke Magin, far north of the city, that would not be included in the canopy coverage for La Crisana, which is mostly one census tract. So we, we still estimate 32% in that area. To your question regarding the minimum goals for specific census tracts, for example, let me actually go back to our chart for an example. Towards our San Fernando corridor, we have a census tract, which I believe is bisected by the Five Highway. That has 11%. That's in the, the far upper-left corner of this map. This area is, in terms of our available public planting sites, we estimate that there's only a couple of hundred trees left to plant in those public sites, and that's why we wouldn't recommend a specific goal per census tract, just because, realistically speaking, with the land use being heavily industrial, there's not much opportunity for non-public trees to be able to make up for some of that lost canopy. However, if we go to our chart at the end, which I've included here, this appendix, this highlights in yellow the specific census tracts which are below that 25% coverage. But keep in mind that census tracts vary in size. They vary in population, and so realistically, I don't think we would be comparing apples to apples to be able to say we're going to raise the, the canopy coverage citywide if we're just focusing on some specific census tract, which maybe don't have any opportunities for private or public trees compared to other areas with more population or more people using that area.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is, we're going to have this 25% number. You're saying Duke Magin is excluded. Are there other areas that are excluded?
Mayor Protam Kusakian, members of city council, councilmember Rotman, yes, the, the analysis excludes all of these non-urban areas that are far outside where people are able to physically walk.
Okay. Are you, you know, it doesn't have to be now, but I'd be interested in seeing a map of what's included and what's excluded. So I guess you're going to be excluding, like, where the fire roads are up in the Verdugo Mountains and, and, you know, Brand Park and places like that. Is that what you're talking about? Like, are real open space areas are not included?
Correct. The, for Brand Park, for example, that's part of the census tract with residential areas, so that is included. And that does perhaps skew the numbers up in that area, but those areas that are totally removed from any public, those areas were removed in the staff analysis.
Okay. But I think, you know, the point, I think, is that we want to make sure that we're not leaving anybody behind.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, on the species selection, I see you, you have a list that you've been using for some time now, and you, I guess you say, you know, you're updating it periodically. I would, I would encourage you to really go and look at some of, I think, and maybe you have already, you know, but Northeast Trees, Tree People, Audubon Society, I think they've all been kind of coming out with new lists because of our understanding of how quickly the climate is changing, and it's, you know, happening much faster than we thought even five years ago. So I think it would be good to just be sure we really are on the leading edge of, you know, the kind of, the kind of species that are going to be suitable for just, you know, 10 years out, 20 years out from now. Because these trees, I think you said last time, have like a 20-30-year life, right? So we need to be planning out at that kind of horizon. So I would just, I would just encourage that. And then the last thing is, I had asked for us to look at a, kind of a tree replacement, a private tree replacement ordinance, and, and I believe that's what Pasadena, La Cunyata, Flint Ridge have. So if a homeowner is to take down a tree, there would be some requirement, depending on the size of the tree, to replace with X number of trees, or maybe pay an in-lug fee or something like that. Are you able to talk to what Pasadena, La Cunyata, Flint Ridge have currently, and whether that's something that, you know, if not now, you know, you could come back to us on?
Mayor Protam Kusakian, members of city council, councilmember Rotman, I, I'm not prepared to speak on the specifics of those other ordinances at this time.
Okay, but that, that is something that I had asked for, and I thought would be coming back with this report. So that's fine. There's a lot here. I mean, this is a great report. I, I should have started out saying that. This is, there's really a lot of stuff here, and it's exciting, and I'm, and I'm, you know, totally supportive. But if you could bring that back, because I still do want us to consider something like that, so that we're, you know, we're going to have, I mean, SB 9 just passed, I mean, we're going to have a lot more density, and I just want to make sure that as areas are developed and trees, it may not be, may not be indigenous, may not be heritage or whatever, are lost, that there is some mechanism to make sure we're not getting a net loss from, from that development.
Yeah, councilmember Rotman, we can definitely bring that report back as part of the report that we'll have to bring back to council based on your direction tonight. So we'll include that. You are correct, you had asked for that report as well.
Sure. Okay. I, I think that covers it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Agajanian, do you wish to ask? Well, we have one caller, but let me ask councilmember Agajanian, do you have any questions, or councilmember Najarian?
I don't have any real questions. I have just...
Some comments?
Well, yeah, kind of a question and comment. So, when did we do this? Back in May? So remember when I asked you to go look at some historical pictures of Glendale? Were you able to do that? What did you see?
Mayor Protam Kusakian, members of city council, councilmember Agajan, I'm sorry, Najarian. So we, we have viewed those historical photos, and those photos come from a time after Glendale was already, especially the woodlands is where a lot of those photos work from, or from South Glendale where it was urban. That's after these areas had already been cleared for firewood, for, for ranching, for farming. But it's also the 25% goal that we're recommending. That is, you know, that's consistent with the type of land that we're seeing here. We looked at the other organizations that have done studies on what kind of canopy that they recommend, and for areas in our chaparral ecosystem, which is not always a forest, some areas are forest, they recommend 25% due to our changes and the urban environment that we've built up here.
Right. Well, I was able to look at some photos. I just, just for curiosity, I want to show everyone what, what I believe Glendale to have looked like. Can we get that larger? So this is from... So this is from Griffith Park, I think. Actually, it's looking, perhaps this is from Adams Hill looking north. Not a lot of trees there. I think we've come a long way, baby. Next one.
La Crisana.
This is La Crisana. I know there was some logging in the mountains, but, but again, not a lot of canopy. La Cunyata, La Crisana, now you say is well above the 25% coverage. Is there one more, one or two?
Yes, there's Montrose and Brand Park.
Yeah, so this is Montrose. I mean, this place was a prairie. You know, there may have been some trees cut down, maybe for grazing. I don't, I don't think this was a huge cattle grazing area, although I know Verdugo did have some cattle.
Brand Park.
Brand Park. What we, it's almost unrecognizable compared to what we have today with lush trees. So I'm not sure what my point is. My point is, don't sound so gloom and doom. As a city, we've come a hell of a long way in populating our city with trees. I think the point of your presentation is we've lost some, looking back 10 years or 12 years, we should try to keep that up. But let's put it in historical perspective, that what our forefathers have done is truly amazing, transforming the topography and geography of this city into what we have currently. Yeah, there are some bad spots on San Fernando, I agree with you on that. But we've done a very good job. I'd like to, when you come back, talk about the possibility of sort of what Mr. Rotman was saying, but not just tree replacement, maybe tree adoption. If, you showed us Glen Oaks east of Verdugo, wide parkways, but no trees, is it possible to get residents involved in adopting a tree, to making sure that it gets adequately watered, and maybe giving them a small break on their water bill? Maybe not, just out of their, the goodness of their hearts.
Or a plaque. How about a plaque?
A plaque, saying this tree adopted, yeah, that's a very good idea. I mean, we wouldn't hammer it, and we'd find a friendly way to, to adjust it. But I think these are all ways to get the community involved, and work with the deep watering issue that you talked about, or was in the report. Maybe there's a way they can perhaps put a deep hole adjacent to the tree, so it's easier for the water to get in there, rather than just water on the surface, which I think, as you said, the roots really get watered three feet down. I mean, for, for good watering, they have to be three feet, rather than the few inches that usually you get when you do that. But thank you for the report. It's great, obviously, for the environment, for our, for the atmosphere, and I guess, character of the city. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Agajanian, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, let's go to the callers. I believe there are two callers on this item.
Correct, Mayor Protam. Monica Campagna, you have three minutes. Monica, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protam Kusakian, city staff, the council members. I'm calling tonight Monica Campagna from Glendale, and I'm the campus caretaker at Franklin Elementary, where I do a lot of planting. And I just want to thank Mr. Warren Click and the Public Works Department and the Urban Forestry staff for the excellent support tonight. It's the second I've seen from your staff, and they have both been just terrific presentations. I'm a little partial, because this is the job that my dad had back in Baltimore City. I've enjoyed your presentations, and I do hope the city will support all the initiatives that you've outlined, using your strategic approach to target the areas that are, that need the tree cover the most first, and that I hope the council will allocate the funding that you need to do all these things to accomplish the goals of planting more trees and taking care of the trees that we have now and increasing the watering efforts, because I know the watering efforts are almost as important as tree planting themselves. That's what I do a lot of at the school. And I just want to also give praise to Northeast Trees, who's been our partner with TUSD on the project at Franklin, and have worked with me for several years now, since 2016. They never fail to show up when I need their help or advice, and in fact, they were helpful in a grant that I just got for the school, and that helped get seven new trees in last weekend. And I just, I hope, encourage any partnerships you can have with them for any other... partnerships you can have with them for any other public projects. I know there was one that you may reapply for next year and I think it was more of a matter that perhaps Northeast Trees was too successful, that grant cycle. But I think you're gonna have a great chance at getting that grant next time for those 500 trees and Jefferson Elementary. So keep up the great work and thank you for all that you do. Trees are the probably single most thing we need more of in our city. Thank you.
All right, caller, next caller.
Ms. Valentine, you have three minutes. Ms. Valentine, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Good evening. So there is no longer arborist. We have now Mr. Forester. Is that right? Am I understanding that? I have a question, just a personal question. First, in Pasadena, they're very strict. They put permanent heavy fences around their trees when the developing is being done. They, they will not allow to develop a monkey around with that, with that protective fence. My question is, are there any trees that are not supposed to be planted in Glendale? For example, palm trees or ferns that grow a hun, over 100 feet tall? That, or are there any species that are harmful? That's all. That, just for my own knowledge. Can I plant any tree I want? Thank you.
Thank you. There's one more caller.
Adrian Griffin, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Adrian.
Hi, yes. Thank you. I just want to thank everybody on City Council, all our council members, and Mayor Protem Kusakian for allowing this agenda item to be put up, put forth. But before I do that, I, I just want to publicly say how sad I am to hear about Mr. Devine's passing. And I know that Paula has really contributed to our community in just so many ways. And, and so I'm very sad to hear about his loss. As far as trees are concerned here in our city, Ara, I am very concerned about your, your photo because I think that it, it may not be perfectly representing what you're speaking of. It, it looks to me, and I'm not an expert on old photos in La Crisenta, but it looks to me like this is when the lots were first cleared or after the floods, when the north-south streets were first plowed again. So I, you know, we've been through a lot up here in La Crisenta, so it's very difficult for me to make any, you know, specific statement to a specific photograph because that's not my expertise. But I do want to say that, you know, it, it really looks like, like the lots were cleared to be prepared for, for, you know, for whatever was happening at that time. So anyways, we do have, we have come a really long way. And I want to address just really quickly the, the preservation of species and the importance of diversity here in Southern California. And I know that the arborists and the, the city department that, that put everything forth in the report talks about various communities that they didn't discuss, La Cuenyada, Flintridge, and their policy, which is extended to Bay Laurel and Deodora Pines. And, you know, I do think that we should be preserving the species. They're specific, they're, they're special to our communities. And so I would like the city council to consider that as an extension and increase. Okay, I also, I'm just fine with the idea of adopting a tree. It's really cute. But when it really comes down to it, I want to know if the city's gonna be cracking open the sidewalks down on Central and Brand and adding some trees because we have an awful lot of sidewalks in the downtown community. The west and east directional streets are, you know, not as canopied and covered and the north-south streets as well. I'd like to see a little bit more there as well as in the southern part of our community where there's no question that there is no shade. There's no shade by, by bus stops and this is where people are taking the bus.
Ms. Griffin, your, your time, your time has expired.
Thank you. And thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Any more callers?
No, Mayor. That was the last caller.
Mayor Protem. I'm just pinch hitting. I don't want to take over. And thank you, staff, for this report. I will just say that I, I do agree with Councilmember Bratman's assessment that, given how the climate is changing, we ought to be looking out 30 years. So whatever trees that we're planting on or are looking at now may not be suitable for, you know, the longer summers or the hotter summers that we may have and the shorter growth period. I, I think that overall, having more trees is tremendous benefit, not only in terms of mitigating the impacts of climate change. And trees improve the quality of air, water quality, they provide shade for, in terms of reducing that heat effect, they enhance and increase property values, they slow the amount of erosion. And it's true that when you look at certain photos of, of this area, it was fairly arid, but, you know, really, there may not have been a lot of trees. But also, that means there wasn't a lot of water. Yet, we've brought people here, we've brought communities here, we've brought in water by manipulating the environment. And I think that in order to make this a suitable place and continue to make it a suitable place, I think 25% is, is a good goal. I would like to see more. I don't know how we can do that. You mentioned, you look at that, I don't want to call it a heat map, but the green shaded map and obviously the areas that are somewhat industrial, that were the lightest along San Fernando, bordering Los Angeles ironically, just across LA River, probably are the areas that are going to produce the greatest, you know, difficulty in terms of finding places where you can put trees. Still, we can try wherever we can. In terms of the type of species, consideration I think is important. Definitely some trees need to be replaced. You are seeing the effects of extended drought on a lot of our trees, some of them that, as beautiful as they are, you can tell they're on their way out. And I know there have been articles about even our beautiful palm trees not having much longevity. So whatever it, it may take. Now, is there any consideration in terms of, we've talked about using a lot of our rooftops or rooftop spaces for, for some greenery, some trees. Does that count towards any of this canopy cover at all, or only the trees that generally we can see from a street level view?
Mayor Protem Kusakian, this 25 or 20% estimate, that includes all trees, public or private. The imagery was taken from satellite or LiDAR, so that would include any canopy.
Okay. I know that we've looked at, you know, there's laws now that require at least a certain portion of rooftops to be able to support solar and hopefully that will continue and it'll be an increased trend. But in as much as, you know, we can be creative with some of our rooftop spaces and, and create green spaces, especially in some of our dense areas like in the downtown, encourage that. I think that would be helpful as well. As well as if we do have any open spaces where we have land available, if there's any groups, nonprofits, I know we, for a while, we were promoting community gardens, but if anyone wants to use those spaces in order to raise saplings, grow saplings, which then can be used within the city, I think we ought to consider that as well. I have a few spots in mind that I continue to drive by. And on my drives, I think this would be a great place for someone to grow some trees. That, those are my comments. I think in terms of directions, I do support, I am supportive of us making the appropriate allocation of funds, making that commitment to increasing the canopy, as well as returning to a more regular cycle of trimming. I think that's good all around for the community. It lowers the risk of issues as some of older trees dry out. And that's it. I don't know how, how much more else I can add. I do think that trees definitely enhance the overall quality of life in Glendale. I think it's important for us to make this a goal. We'll reap the benefits of it. There is a, there was an Armenian monk, Mahitar Ghosh, who lived in the 12th century. He was known for writing one of the first legal texts or one of the earliest legal texts and laws for the Armenian kingdom. And in it, one of the cardinal sins or the, one of the greatest crimes that was punishable was to cut down a tree, especially a fruit-bearing tree. So I think it's appropriate for us to, in that spirit, help Glendale flourish. Any other comments or is there any direction? Let me ask staff, what specific direction or what do you need us to say for you to move forward on this green path?
Mayor Protem Kusakian, Members of City Council, I believe we have sufficient direction that will assist us in formulating a report to come back to you with potential funding sources, since we've got direction from council to, to move forward with, with a percentage of canopy. I do believe we have sufficient direction, like I said, to bring back a report and move forward.
Do we have that? I know I, I've spoken in favor of that. Councilmember Najarian, Agajanian, do you agree?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Do you need us to make a motion and a second on that?
It would be good to make a motion to direct staff to bring back the report with the items that Mr. Glanion just discussed.
All right.
Okay, I'll make that motion for staff to bring back a report reflecting the direction we've given today.
Sure.
Second.
Thank you. May we have roll call? Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Bratman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Mayor Protem Kusakian?
Yes. Next, we have hearings. Let's hear 9A read into the record. And actually, can we read both 9A and 9B into the record at once? Let's hear both Mills Act's?
I try to, I, I don't encourage it, but we've done in the past. So if that's something you want to do to move things along, I'm okay with it.
We'll read them into the record together, but then we'll take them separately.
Yes, sir.
9A would be community development regarding 268 West Kenneth Road, Glendale Register nomination, Mills Act application, one motion authorizing listing of the property located at 268 West Kenneth Road, Glendale, California, on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources as GR 136 to be known as the Weber House. Two, motion authorizing the city manager to enter into a Mills Act historic property contract with the property owner of 268 West Kenneth Road, Glendale, California pursuant to section 15.20.070.a. of the Glendale Municipal Code. B would be community development regarding 1300 North Maryland Avenue, Glendale, registered nomination and Mills Act application, one motion authorizing listing of the property located at 1300 North Maryland Avenue, Glendale, California on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources as GR 137 to be called the Tantum House.
Tantum House, right? Tantum House, is that how we say it?
Tantum House. Motion authorizing the city manager to enter into a Mills Act historic property contract with the property owner of 1300 North Maryland Avenue, Glendale, California pursuant to section 15.20.070.a. of the Glendale Municipal Code.
So I'll open the hearing at 9A for 268 West Kenneth Road. Mr. Plant?
Thank you very much. We have two very different houses for your consideration tonight for both Glendale Register listing and also Mills Act contracts, as you've heard. The first is a 268 West Kenneth Road. It's proposed to be called the Weber House. And as you can see in the left-hand picture, when you look at it from Kenneth Road, you don't see a lot. It's a mid-century, 20th century, modern house. And a lot of these properties don't say a lot to the street. They're very inward focused. And this one is especially so. And it's kind of interesting for that. The photo on, on the right shows the front facade of the house, which is set back considerably and a little below the level of Kenneth Road. This house is very interesting compared to many of our properties. This has a really solid architectural pedigree and also a winner of awards. It was designed by architect A. Quincy Jones, who's one of the, the great leaders of mid-century architectural design in California and regionally, did a lot of important work, was very associated with the USC School of Architecture. And what's kind of interesting about this house is it was designed first for a developer in San Diego who proposed a, a small development of these really small, modern, open plan kind of houses that were called the Sun Villa.
Jay, before you go on, could I stop you for a second?
Sure.
I'm gonna need to put this back up again. Like I'm having some issues here.
Okay.
There you go, sir.
You're good?
You'll be fine.
Okay. So the, the first Sun Villa house was actually built in San Diego and ultimately won, oops, sorry, won an, won an award and was published in Architectural Record and other architectural magazines. The design was modified somewhat and then brought to Glendale for the Weber House, which was, Mr. Weber was a schoolteacher and he and his wife raised their family there and chose to work with Quincy Jones. Here are some of his other works. He's very well-known in modern architecture circles for the Eichler tract in Balboa Highlands, up in Granada Hills in Los Angeles at the top left, his home and studio on the top right, St. Michael's Church in Sherman Oaks on the bottom right, and then the Sunnylands Estate for the Annenberg family in Palm Springs. So a real diverse career, always working within this kind of interesting structural expressive, structurally expressive, modernist vein. Here's an article from, from the Architectural Forum where they announced that he was the Builder's House of the Year and it also won an AIA Award. So it's kind of a, a nice pedigree. Here's some photos of the house. We see it from the street with the carport being the dominant feature. It's also a very interesting kind of wood fence that kind of zigzags along that provides privacy for the front yard. As we come down through that carport, we see this, these steps bringing us down to the lower level where the house is built. See the front door there. And again, another privacy screen. One of the really important things about this house was it's less than 1,000 square feet, so there's not a lot of interior space, but each interior space is connected to an outdoor patio or courtyard area to kind of expand the sense of space and also provide indoor/outdoor living opportunities. Here we see the front of the house. And what's interesting here, you can get a sense of its size. If you look on the right-hand side, you can see straight through the house toward the backyard. So we have a lot of glass on the north and south facades. And then when you come around to the sides, you see in this picture, the very deep eve. And there's very limited amount of glass on the side facades to provide privacy with the houses on each side. One of the courtyards is shown, well, the front courtyard you see in the bottom picture here, the white fence actually separates that area from the courtyard that belongs to the primary bedroom. The owner's built with, with permits in our input, a small addition to create an office space as part of that courtyard. And when the Historic Preservation Commission reviewed this, they were very taken by how well-designed that space was and how appropriate it was to the house. Here's a view from that courtyard looking toward the house. You see the glazing at the upper part of the wall as well as the lower. This is one of my favorite features. This is the fireplace on the inside, obviously seen from the outside. And it's basically a round chimney that's made out of a concrete sewer pipe. So he was playing with materials and then also uses the glass to make it look like this is passing from inside to outside rather seamlessly. Here's the side facade where you see the vertical board siding and then these smaller clear story windows that give some access to light, but also give the privacy that I mentioned to the neighbors. This is just looking down the other side. We see a gate that comes into play in terms of the commission's recommendations for Mills Act contracts. The gate's not really, wasn't really designed for the house. And so there's a recommendation to replace it with a material that's more closely related to this wood siding. There's another gate on the other side of the house with the same recommendation. And then here's the rear facade with the living room dining area opening up to the backyard on the left and then one of the bedrooms opening up on the right. And then finally, we have the swimming pool, which is down yet another level. So this site keeps stepping down. You don't notice that much of a slope in the neighborhood, but it feels very, a lot of topography when you're on the site. HPC heard this last month and recommended unanimously that council approve the listing on the Glendale Register and also the Mills Act contract. It was found significant under our criteria in three because of its embodiment of the distinctive and exemplary characteristics of mid-20th century design. And the commission was also taken by the fact that this was a really intact work by A. Quincy Jones. A. Quincy Jones. So there are two conditions, the one I just mentioned about replacing the two gates, and then another condition, that fence that I showed at the beginning, you see in the lower picture here, has some wood rot on it. So the idea is to repair that as best as possible. If the damage is so extensive, we would then work with the owners to remove boards and replace them in kind. That's everything for this house. Move on to the next item. This is a Craftsman house, a completely changing era. I think I forgot to mention that the Weber House was built in 1950. This goes back to 1908. This is in the proposed Casa Verdugo Historic District. So this would be individually listed on the Glendale Register, and if the district goes through, it would obviously be a contributor to the district. This was built around 1908, sorry, and it's proposed to be called the Tatum House. The Tatum's were the first owners, and that's our naming policy in general, unless we have some other reason to give a property a name. And here you see some of the classic features of the Craftsman style steeply. This house has actually a steep, more steeply pitched roof than some of the later craftsmen that would come along in the teens and the twenties. And these beautiful divided light windows with this really interesting kind of diamond pattern, that's all made of wood, just short pieces of wood cut with diamond paint, glass infill. What's kind of unique, not unique exactly, but interesting, is the front porch of this house has this wood cladding, which you don't see on a lot of craftsmen in Glendale or pretty much anywhere else. And then when you look at the upper part of this front facade, you have the nice gable that has kind of the eaves kind of curve out and give it a little architectural character that you don't see on a lot of other houses also. And it looks like I'm frozen here.
Mr. Platt?
Yes.
We have not yet opened the hearing on this as well, so I will, I'd like, should we, let me ask Council how we should proceed on this.
It's, you have discretion, Mr. Mayor Protam. So if you want to do the hearing jointly, then just take comments individually, you can do that.
All right, we'll consider this hearing opened as well.
Okay. Here's a nice shot of the house from the corner. You see it's at the corner Randolph and Maryland. Thinking about the previous presentation, there's this amazing cedar tree in the front yard that is identified in the staff report. And under our policy, trees and plantings that are identified in Glendale Register reports are then part of the protected status of the entire property, where usually we don't regulate landscaping in general for these properties. Here's the side entrance going up to the front porch and the side facade facing Randolph Street. You see those X-painted windows. You have these nice brackets that are holding up the eaves of the roof, giving it a little extra decorative flair. This house looked like it had some earthquake damage, probably in the '72 earthquake. There was originally a fireplace rising up on the side, so that was removed, and I think the porch and these steps were probably rebuilt around that time. But the work is all very appropriate to the style. Here's the porch itself. You see the windows, beautiful oak front door. These are the side facades. See some more of those windows when we, and notice the little bumpout on the left, which I'll show you in a second. This is now looking at the rear facade. A few alterations at the rear facade, but they appear to be very early. This little bumpout that I just showed you from the other direction, looking down the side, was built before 1921. We can find it on the old maps, but we don't know anything about its history, but it's definitely an early part of the house. And it's not unusual for there to be some alterations at the, especially at the rear of properties that are this old, and it didn't have any impact on the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to recommend listing for this house. There's kind of an interesting garage and, you know, upstairs space at the back of the house. This also has been altered over the years. It's hard to kind of piece it together to understand what was there originally in 1908. It's very unlikely there was any garage at all, so we don't really know the actual history here, but it's obviously pretty early based on the construction techniques and just the way it looks. This house was also recommended to unanimously by HPC, also found eligible under Criterion Three because of its representation of the Craftsman style. And there was one condition applied by the commission for the Mills Act, which is to fully paint the entire exterior of the house. Paint was showing a little wear, so that's everything for this one.
Are there any comments?
I do.
Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Platt. On 268 West Kenneth, the Quincy Jones design, looking, looking at, I guess, the rear, the rear facade, how about those sliding doors? What do you, I mean, what's the story with those? Somehow they don't fit. They obviously look like they're new. Is there something else that is more appropriate for that?
Well, these are newer doors, but we have pictures of the previous doors, and they were also clear-finished aluminum doors. They weren't as shiny as this, I think probably because they'd been around a lot longer, but there were definitely just kind of factory-issue aluminum doors at the back.
They're not vinyl. I can't see from.
No, these are kind of high-end. I think they're fleetwood aluminum sliding doors. The proportions are a little bit wider on modern doors. Old aluminum doors had thinner profiles, but we can't get that anymore. So we thought that this was an appropriate replacement.
Okay. On the side of the house, can they clean up that junction box somehow? Is that the way it looked?
This, this is the one we're looking at here?
Yeah. I mean, is, is that the way it was?
Well, no, that was added.
It kind of takes away from the.
Yeah, this is completely invisible. This is literally the side of the house that no one would ever see. The commission didn't call for this, but in some cases, we've asked that these things be painted out, just, you know, they're there, can't deny that they're there, but if you paint them, they're not as noticeable.
Like, paint them that black color?
Yeah, paint them to match the wall.
Is that, you think that's an unreasonable condition to match it?
It's literally so back-of-house that no one's ever going to see it, but it's not unreasonable. It's not a big expense, and I'm sure the owners would agree. The owners are actually online. If, I don't even think you need to ask them, I'm sure they would just take care of that.
Yeah, I mean, they, that's, and that is a very unique chimney. I don't, I don't think you could build a house like that today.
No.
I'm not a, I'm not the building inspector, but, but it, I'm sure at the time, Glendale's finest put it to its test.
Right.
And that's it? That's it? I think I like both homes. Is that a deer head on the top of that?
What are we?
A moose on the, on the.
The Craftsman?
The other home?
Oh, let's explore.
I think on top of the garage conversion.
Unfortunately, the Georges, the owners of this house, it indeed does look like maybe a donkey even. I can't really tell.
Is there any historical significance to that?
It's very, very important, and yeah, we'll make sure that stays. Yeah, I don't know.
Can you, can I ask you to go back to, on this particular house, yes, this slide right here? Does that pre-1921 addition go right up to the property line?
No, you, oh, yeah, it actually does. It's very close to the property line, so it's a non-conforming condition.
Okay.
I've got a job for you as the city inspector.
No, no, I'm just, you know.
No, these are.
I think both homes are fine. Just I know that other folks who have had issues with things going up to a property line have run into more issues. I see Phil chuckling, or at least I think he is. I can't see with his mask.
He might be crying.
Yeah, or he might be crying, indeed. Any other comments from my colleagues before we take action on probably one of the more feel-good items before us in a long time? No? Councilmember Brotman?
I was just going to say, they both look like beautiful properties.
They do indeed. They do indeed. Well, let me close the hearing for, we'll close the hearing on both of them, because I don't believe we have callers. I want to thank the owners of these properties who have remained with us for the duration of this meeting and made themselves available for any questions.
Actually, it looks like you do have Jessica George, and I thought Varan Belisanyan was on before.
I thought I saw them as well.
I think they both said they don't need to speak unless you had questions for them, but they just wanted to see this through.
I just want to thank them for maintaining these properties and enhancing the characteristic and quality of life of Glendale. So with that, is there anyone that would like to move 9A1?
If I can just ask if Councilman Najarian's condition about painting out the equipment is something.
I don't know. I mean, if nobody sees that, if it's at the end, I don't want to make it a condition. It would look.
Okay, I move.
No one's going to go back. Let's just keep it as it is.
Let's, we're going to take each, we're going to take each property separately, but you can move 9A1 and 2 together.
Yes, sir.
Whoever.
9A1 and 2.
Second.
I move 9A1 and 2.
Moved by Councilmember Agajanian, seconded by Councilmember Najarian. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Mayor Protam Kusakian?
Yes. And let's.
9A.
9B.
9B1 and 2.
We have a motion on 9B1 and 2 by Councilmember Agajanian. Would anyone wish to second that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Brotman has seconded that. Let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
And Mayor Protam Kusakian?
Yes, thank you. With that, that concludes our agendized business. We'll now move on to oral communications, and then we'll have some, I believe we have a new business item to introduce.
Well, it would be oral communications. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. I do have a caller on the line. It's Mr. Herbert Milano.
All right, Mr. Milano?
Mr. Milano, you have five minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protam Kusakian and members of the City Council. I'm calling to raise awareness to the City Council and through you, to the general public on the topic of city finance, the level of public awareness of the state of the city's debt, and your own level of understanding and awareness of the financial conditions of the city. The city closed its fiscal year on June 30th, you know, three months ago, and most corporations release their annual financial reports well beginning three months. And the city of Glendale one time finished their financial report in under three months. But most years, it takes them six months, and by the middle of December, we get the release of the financial reports. But it's my contention that a lot of the data that's available to you in December is probably already available now. I'm particularly interested in looking at the financial report sections on the city's total debt and total obligations, the pension system, the payment that the city makes every year towards the post-employment and the pension system. It seems to me that a top-level evaluation of the costs needs to be presented to the council and to the public, and that the cost trends of the last 20 years be presented department by department, and that be explained candidly to the general public. The City Council could take up the discussion of one department per week so as to gain a clear understanding of the cost trends of the city by the time the report is officially released in mid-December. It is with my wish that the city of Glendale would eventually adopt its best governmental practices, as exemplified by the best-run cities in the nation, for purposes of direction and transparency, such that clear strategic objectives are established and measured each year. It is also my contention that the best-run cities create a budget to meet clearly defined objectives of the strategic plan. And I've been talking about this for about the past 18 years. The city's growing debt and its unfunded obligations are a huge and troubling political situation if the public were fully aware. I thought that the establishing of the Blue Ribbon Pension Commission would begin the process of transparency and awareness, but I hardly find any information on it on the city's website. The last one was back in July, when it was the deadline for the submission of names for the commission were presented. There is no other information, and I don't see any push to make the public aware of the topic of this important commission. I respectfully suggest to the City Council to begin the process of public awareness of the city's mounting debt obligations that it can't meet and has not met in over 18 years. I also request that in addition to these top-level objectives, that the city consider contracting with a rand corporation in Santa Monica, or maybe one of the top four major accounting firms in the nation, to provide an unbiased and candid assessment of the city's pension system and major long-term obligations that include the postponed infrastructure that's in the hundreds of millions of dollars. The quality of life of the city's residents depends significantly on how our tax dollars are spent. As of last year, we had an unfunded obligation of nearly $600 million. How much has the city of Glendale spent each year towards pension and post-employment costs? 20 years ago, for the pension system, it was roughly $8 million a year. How much is it now? And how much has it been every single year? I think that the public will get the same reaction that I did, shocked, at just the significant amount of money that goes today towards the pension system and how the infrastructure has been postponed so severely. So it is my suggestion that the City Council push towards getting the Pension Review Committee to convene as early as possible, and to push for transparency and public awareness of the financial situation that the city faces. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian, the Blue Ribbon Commission is in progress, right? Names have been named. I believe there's going to be some report coming back to us. When is that coming?
Yes, Mayor Protam Kusakian, Mayor City Council, you are correct. As you know, as you recall, we had a hard time initially to find interested parties who wanted to be part of this commission, and then we reopened the application period. We finally were able to get nominations from Council for 10 members of the Blue Ribbon Committee. We have four names from our association's bargaining units, and we have been waiting on one bargaining unit, but if we don't hear back from them, we're just going to start the meetings. We already have executed a contract with a facilitator, so Mr. Milano and the rest of the appointed members of the committee should be hearing from Mr. Takdalian, Deputy City Manager, in the next couple of days.
Thank you so much. And I'm sure we'll be hearing more about pensions, finances, the city's finances during those meetings, so we look forward to them. I believe we have two more callers, so let's go to the next caller.
Mayor, I just received another caller, too. This one is Karen Low. Karen Low, you have five minutes. Go ahead.
Ms. Low?
Karen Low? Ms. Low, can you hear us? Karen Low, can you hear us?
Ms. Low, if you can hear us, please lower the volume on your TV set or device, whatever you're using to watch our meeting, and you can proceed.
Mayor Protam, I can put her on hold and get to the next caller.
Sure, let's do that. Let's go to the next caller.
Roberta Medford? You have five minutes, Roberta. Go ahead. Roberta Medford? You have five minutes. Go ahead. Roberta, can you hear us?
Let's go back to Ms. Low. Let's see if her audio has caught up.
Karen Low, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Karen, yes, you have five minutes. Go ahead, Ms. Low.
Okay, it'll take much less than that. Yes, good evening, councilmembers. As you know, my name is Karen Low. I live in Rossmore. A few years ago, I know we grappled with the GWP issue of the gas turbine. So I can't believe that we're here again facing the same issue after in 2019, GWP agreed to come up with a plan that uses less gas and more clean energy. And this comes at a time when the UN Panel on Climate said we're facing a flashing code red for the planet's climate, and the single biggest reason cited is the use of fossil fuel. Now GWP is planning to add a gas fire plant. That should even be an option, especially when we have so many better, cheaper, and healthier options. Obviously, using gas power, using gas power will make air quality in Glendale even worse. That's indisputable. It will affect all of us. But perhaps the most egregious part of this whole fiasco is that the plant is close to the most susceptible members of our community, our children. the most susceptible members of our community, our children. They will sit in classes every day, very close to the plant, unaware that our community leaders are willing to put their health in jeopardy. Every member who supports the GWP plan should be required to go into those classes and tell these children why they did this. Every one of us knows someone who has asthma, heart disease, cancer, or some other serious issue related to air pollution. This begs the question, if by any council member would support more gas power when every nation on earth is trying to get away from it? Do we really want to be the last city in California pursuing more gas and not doing everything within our power to improve the air quality, to improve the health of our children? With so much at stake, why would any of you opt to do the wrong thing in supporting the use of more gas? Reject the GWP's plan. It will scuttle the council's own plan to move to 100% clean energy by 2035. Thank you.
Let's see if Ms. Medford is back online.
Roberta Medford, can you hear me? Roberta Medford? Ms. Medford, can you hear me? Mayor Protam, I do believe she got dropped off, she's calling back right now, on a different Roberta Medford, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, you have five minutes, Roberta.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm calling in tonight from Montrose, and coincidentally, it is Climate Week at the United Nations, so it's a good time for this, and I'd like to comment on the recent partially recirculated draft EIR issued by Glendale Water and Power. I am very disappointed and quite, and quite troubled that in apparent disregard of City Council's clear instructions, Glendale Water and Power has returned yet again with a proposal for significant new natural gas spending while having, in the meantime, moved very, very slowly on clean energy projects here in Glendale. This lack of a sense of urgency about Earth's climate change emergency by our publicly-owned electric utility is unacceptable to me. Glendale must not be the last place in California to add new fossil fuel infrastructure. I urge City Council to renew and strengthen your directions for more clean energy and again say, no new gas at Grayson. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Medford.
Elise Kalfayan, Elise?
This month, anticipating this fall's global climate meetings, including Climate Week, more than 200 medical and public health journals published a joint call for emergency action to limit global temperature increases, restore biodiversity, and protect health. So this editorial was published in 200 medical journals. The editorial warned of increasing health problems due to rising global temperatures, and they wrote, "Ahead of your pivotal meetings, we, the editors of health journals worldwide, call for urgent action to keep average global temperature increases below 1.5 degrees centigrade, halt the destruction of nature, and protect health." They go on to say that "the environmental crisis demands an emergency response, and huge investment will be needed beyond what is being considered or delivered anywhere in the world." So I put this new Grayson re-power plan in the bucket of what the authors disparage as what is being considered or delivered. It's not enough. It preserves a business model that is not working in conjunction with Climate Week talks. Bill McKibben wrote in The New Yorker yesterday that we must cut emissions in half. Utility companies don't want that to happen because they want to keep their current business model. Glendale Water and Power has had two years to come up with more clean energy as City Council directed it to do. This plan, the plan that they have presented should be rejected, and a new one drafted that includes dramatically more local solar with storage, which could have been accomplished if it had been given top priority. Thank you.
Thank you. One more caller.
Ben Apikchun, Ben, you have five minutes, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, council, thank you for taking the call. I am calling to express my concern about the investment that GWP is making a recommendation for investing in more fossil fuels against this, and I'm really hoping that the City Council comes through and makes this right. I think it's an incredible opportunity for you to show leadership, and I hope that, I hope that you do. Thank you for listening to my comment.
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Thank you. May we have the new business item? Who would like to read it into the record?
I have it, Mr. Mayor Protam. I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to resolve the lawsuit entitled Yuan Fu versus City of Glendale, case number 20STCV13983, in exchange for a full release of all claims in the amount of $375,000 with the city to be reimbursed by its insurance carrier for all amounts in excess of its remaining self-insured retention. This settlement is not an admission of any liability whatsoever for any wrongdoing with respect to plaintiff by defendant or by any person or department, but is the compromise of a disputed claim.
Will someone second that?
I'll second that.
Great, we have a.
Second.
Thank you, seconded, thank you, Councilmember Agajanian. I think Mr. Brodmann may have beaten you to the punch on this one. Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brodmann.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine. And Mayor Protam Kasakian.
Yes. All right, if there's no other items before this council, then I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn in memory of Glendale resident and philanthropist, Savi Tufenkien.
Second, so moved.
Second.
Second, and thirded, and fourthed. Thank you. All right, we stand adjourned at 9:38 PM. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.